Order the board meeting at one o'clock today and have our land acknowledgement by trustee Toon.
Oki, welcome to our division office located on the traditional land and territory of the Nitsitsapi, Pekani, Kainai and Sitzika, the Blackfoot people within the Treaty VII region of Southern Alberta.
Thank you Brad. Um, we're gonna start with the consent agenda. Um, is there anyone who needs, would like anything additional pulled out of the consent agenda? No? Okay. So, we'll start with the approval of minutes if there are no errors or omissions in the minutes of the September eleventh, two thousand nineteen organizational board meeting. Oh, right, that's in part of it. Sorry. So can I get approval for the consent agenda? Okay. From John? Oh, sorry. And is there any emergent changes to the agenda? In light of current situations, we are going to table F2 until our next meeting. Any other changes? Okay. And is there any declaration of conflicts of interest? Okay, so we need to approve the agenda? Oh, right, John made the motion. Okay, and all in favor? Okay. There's no declaration of interest? Okay, trustee Yegos and trustee Hodges both can't be here and send their regrets, but will be with us next time. Okay, so we're gonna move on to our discussion items, our consent agenda? Yeah, let's, let's, sorry I jumped ahead. Let's do the superintendent report.
All right, thank you. So... I think Lacey might have just cut me off there for a minute.
Sorry.
Okay. I think we've got it back now. So, the beginning of the school year is always a very, very busy time, and this year was no exception. I'll just capture a few of the things that were highlights from the month and then touch on a few points looking forward into the next month. But we, I'll skip down halfway through my report to the Minister of Education. And since Lori isn't here, maybe I'll just talk about that for a minute. But you know that we had an opportunity to meet with the Minister of Education on September nineteenth, and she was able to come and tour WA Day School and the Kids First Family Centre. We were able to talk to her along with the board about the different partnerships that we've developed in this community here, in particular with WA Day. So, that was a great opportunity for us to showcase one of the schools and the great partnerships that happened in the community. The WA Day students who are, who happened to lead the tour that day did a great job. It's always nice to have the students and they were able to describe what's happening in their school and all the great things that are going on there. And then following that, we were able to come back here and to have time for the minister to have a conversation with the trustees and senior management about different challenges that we faced and an opportunity for us to highlight various programs and activities that are really successful in the school division as well. So that was great. We, jumping down a couple more bullets, I've been able to be out in most of our schools in the first few weeks of the school year, and that's a, that's a busy time of the year for them and us getting things going, but we have some new administrative changes and this was an opportunity just to touch base with the principals to get an idea of, you know, how their class configurations look, their class sizes for any changes in enrollment, which Jeff will go over in a little bit. And so it was an opportunity for us just to have a few minutes, one-on-one time, and to check in. We, we held our first administrator council meeting last week, and we had some representatives from ASEBP come down and we really kicked, it was a great way to start the year. We focused on wellness of staff and students, and in particular, we focused on our Employee Family Assistance Program that is available to all staff within Livingston Range, and helping our administrators understand some of the benefits that are in, in that plan. And so ASEBP came down, spent, it was supposed to be an hour, I think we, we took an hour and a half with them, had some really good conversation. There's some electronic online courses that our administrators could take to help them understand wellness a little bit more in the workplace and how they can work with their staff. So that was a great way to start our first admin council meeting of the year. We also had an opportunity to meet with our new teachers. So as part of teacher-to-teacher with our eighteen new teachers this year, and I think there were seven or eight from last year that joined us as well, because we moved our mentorship to a two-year program now. We were able to hear from former principal and now ATA Staff Officer Ian Stewartson. He came down and spent the morning with our new teachers and talked to them about how they could effectively use their educational assistance in the classroom, what their responsibilities are as the teacher and what the education, educational assistance responsibilities are, and we were able to have some good conversation around that topic. And then in the afternoon, our very own Kevin Ver Burke, our Behavior Specialist Teacher, was able to spend some time with our teachers talking about classroom management, management strategies. That's always a struggle for new, new teachers, just wondering how to approach and manage a classroom. And so he was able to share some very valuable information with them, and I think, while I know from talking to some of them as they were leaving that day, that they really appreciated the opportunity to get together, to have conversation and professional development in those two areas. Looking forward into next month, we've got the Board/CEO evaluation. That's always a great opportunity for personal and the board reflection and growth. And we've got the Inspiring Leadership Session coming up this Friday, actually. We've got twenty participants signed up for that, and we're really excited to get that going within our school division. And you've noticed now, as you've been in the building again, that our student artwork is back up on the walls and it's looking really sharp. And so we have the art gala coming up, and I think Brad's maybe going to talk about that a little bit later on, so I won't say anything more other than that's a great night and I always look forward to it. So with that, maybe I'll close. Are there any questions that people have about my monthly report?
John? Trustee McKee?
Mic turned on. Hello. Once again, you've shown that you had a, and the education, a service agreement with the Kainai Board of Education. Could you just expand upon that, please?
Sure. We meet with Kainai, I wanna say probably every two months or so. I think we're very close to, yeah, the volume seems a little bit loud here. Very close to being at a point where we can then present the Education Services Agreement to our various boards. As you know, Kainai is working with us and Westwind and Holy Spirit and Lethbridge 51, and we're doing lots of things in collaboration to design the, some common elements of that plan. And then through a collaborative plan, there's flexibility on how we meet those needs, and certainly that will come back to the board. We have a meeting set, and maybe Richard can remind me. I think it's in November, to come back together again at that time. We will have, what we, what we anticipate having at that time is a version of the Education Services Agreement and that we can bring back to the boards and to have a closer look and answer any questions on a local level. Okay?
Trustee Long?
And Pekani, where are we with them?
Yeah, we've met with them prior to the school year, just like the week prior to the school year starting. And I would say we've got a really good working relationship there going on. We've made a lot of progress. We are coming back together October fifteenth. I knew it was upcoming for our second meeting of this school year. That one is a little bit farther away. We, we started the Kainai Education Service Agreements earlier than we've started with Pekani. So that one might be a little bit down the road, but we're making good progress there too. All right, thank you.
Thanks Darrell. It sounds like the year's getting off to a really good start, busy as always. We're gonna go ahead and go to Jeff now for our enrollment update and audited financial statement in service. I'll try not to cut you off.
We'll figure this out. Madam Chair, I would just ask, actually, if I can have a little bit more time, so just to defer the enrollment to a later point of the meeting so that I can put together some additional information that was not provided, just for context. So, would that be possible?
Just table it to the next meeting, then?
Nope, to later in this meeting.
Oh, later in this meeting. Yep, that's no problem.
And I'll move into the financial statement.
Sure.
Okay, so this is the most exciting part of your year, is going through the financial statement in preparation for the financial statement year-end two thousand nineteen. Typically, what we do, for those that may not remember, is we go through the prior year's financial statement, and not necessarily all the information with all the answers to all the questions and things of that nature, but to give you an understanding of how the document itself works, to help you better prepare yourself for asking questions to the auditors when they come in November. And so that's what my focus is going to be. So if you get to asking me why this changed from this to this, I may not know the answer because I haven't put together the time to evaluate this document again from the prior year. So, there's, there's some components of this document that are extremely important. The, the first one is page three. So if you'd like to turn to page three. The first page is just where we sign off on the document after the audit has been completed and the board has approved the document. But page three is the letter that you are looking for, and you're looking for an unqualified opinion on the financial statement, which basically means that you're in line with the generally accepted accounting principles within the province of Alberta and the country of Canada. And that's typically in the very last paragraph where it says opinion. In our opinion, the financial statements fairly present in all material respects the financial position of the Livingston Range. So that means that the ongoings for that year are recorded in a manner that reflects what actually transpired, where the financial position of the jurisdiction lies, and is good information for the readers of the financial statement. If we, any questions on that? It also has management's responsibility. One thing that the auditors will bring to your attention is that the financial statements are the responsibility of the, the board, which is outlined in the Education Act. And that's why you approve the financial statements after they've been audited and you've had an audit opinion on them. But the management's responsibilities isn't to ensure that these statements are in line with the generally accepted accounting principles and that they don't misstate what, what transpired. And so the auditors are only giving an opinion on that based on the testing that they've completed and the analysis that they've, it doesn't mean that they will find everything and anything that might be out of order, but within their materiality, it is within reason. So though, therefore, if, if somebody's trying to commit fraud and trying to go about it in a way that is to avoid, they may not find it, but generally they will through their testing processes. But they have other analysis and things that they do to ensure to, to catch some of those things as well. Any questions on, on that document, on that page? The first, page four of this document is what's called the balance sheet or the Statement of Financial Position. It tells you where you are at any point in time. So this is saying where the financial position of the board is as of August thirty-first, two thousand eighteen. It tells you what your assets are. It also tells you what your liabilities are. And typically, if you take your assets and subtract your liabilities, that's the equity that you would have built up in any business. The equity in this case is the resources that are available or have been expended and invested in capital items within the jurisdiction. And so accumulated surplus is one area, which is at the bottom of the document, that is important for readers of the financial statement. Typically, this document will break it into assets that are easily liquidated and those that are, are not easily liquidated, which is typically non-financial assets. So cash, accounts receivable, portfolio investments, those can typically be turned into cash. Liabilities are what they are, and your non-financial assets are your capital. You can typically turn those around and, and put those into cash. So they give you, it gives you an understanding of where you are if you need to meet your obligations in a short amount of time. But that's what that is. The sec, the fifth page is the Statement of Operations. Actually, let's go back to the, the page four. What are some, I'll make you, make this more of a participating item. What are some items that you might want to ask the auditor based on the financial position of the jurisdiction? So typically, this will show you that this is what two thousand eighteen was, this is what two thousand seventeen was. Right? So you're looking at what your current year-end is as well as your previous year-end. So if there's significant changes from one year to the other, that might be an area that you might want a further explanation for. And typically, the auditor goes through that and identifies those, but if they don't, then that would be something that you could ask for. You could ask for clarification on any one particular item. If you don't understand what deferred revenue is and you want an example of that, then you can ask for that. But typically, on this document, it also has notes section. So it says what the item is, then in between the, actually, the figures and the, what it is, there's a reference of a note to, so the notes are found in the back of the document, and they typically have further, more information in regards to what that account is made up of. So for example, deferred revenue, we're gonna follow that one through and we're gonna go to Schedule Seven. Okay, so everybody's flipped Schedule Seven, which is on page... Oh, sorry, not Schedule Seven, Note Seven, which is on page twenty-four. So what deferred revenue is, is it's funds that we've received but are targeted for a specific purpose. And so typically, you don't expend those on anything other than what that purpose is. And so if we have money left over that is, has not been expended in that area, we hold on to that. We call it a deferred revenue and we hold it here, and it doesn't hit the revenue on the financial statement until we expend it on something that is associated with that. Those dollars are the targeted reason for that. So for example, infrastructure maintenance and renewal is one line item on there. Those are dollars that we receive for greater or bigger projects other than just the regular plant operation and maintenance. We receive those funds and we defer them until we expend them in those areas. So we started out with three point four million in deferred revenue for IMR last year. We received additional funds, we expended funds, and then the balance left over is three point four six one million. And again, those are targeted dollars. They can only be used for the reason that you receive them. And so every year, you get an IMR plan from the maintenance department with regards to what those dollars would be expended on. You approve that plan, and then they work towards that. And quite often, based on resources, you know, manpower and things of that nature, they may not get to spending all of them, and so they're deferred until a new year, and that's kind of what that is. So that gives you an example of on the financial, Statement of Financial Position, where you can find greater information. It'll ident, it'll itemize what that balance is made up of. Okay? Any questions on that? No? The second statement that's of importance is the Statement of Operations, which is on page five. This tells you all the funding that is received on a higher level and all the expenses that are paid out. And then it'll give you your net operating surplus or deficit. If you're a small business or something, you call that your net income or net loss. So you can see in the prior year, the revenues that came in were fifty-four million one hundred thousand. It's the third column. It says actual for two thousand eighteen. The expenditures were fifty-four, almost fifty-four point five million. So there was a deficit of three hundred ninety-one thousand dollars. So we, we paid more out than we actually received in that year. Now, that was a planned deficit. We were anticipating using some of our reserves. And so typically, legislation for education facilities doesn't allow deficits unless it's in a planned scenario of this nature, right? So...
Is there a way to know that it's planned for when someone is looking at these sheets and these documents? Or?
Yeah, yeah, that's a good question. So these financial statements are on our website. In addition to what's on our website is a budget document, which identifies what our plan is for the year. And so you'd have to reference that document to see what the original deficit. But also on this document, we actually, you can also look on here as well. So the Statement of Operations has the budget column, which is the second column. So you can see that we anticipated this fifty-two point five million in revenues with fifty-three point six million in expenditures for about a million dollar deficit. And based on what, how things went last year, the deficit wasn't as great as what we anticipated. Okay? It's also important to compare to what the prior year was, so that's why we have actual two thousand seventeen. So you can see if there's a huge increase in any one revenue item, you might wanna ask what that is, what that entails, why is there more revenue this year than there was last year? Or vice versa, why is there less revenue in this particular area than there was last year? Which is, that's, that's what the auditors will come in to us and ask as well, because they wanna get an understanding of, as to why there's fluctuation and so forth. This is also what we do to our administrators at the school level. So on a quarterly basis, they're required to, to provide us an analysis, a variance analysis with regards to the revenue that's come in at the school level. It's also what they've expended and, and why it's different or up or down from their budget. So, but we also look at what's, what were we budgeting and where are we based on that budget as well as what it was last year's and why we look for an analysis and a reason for why it was up and down, which tells a story. So the auditors feel that the Statement of Cash Flow, which is on page six, is also an important document. This tells you, you know, the, it, it tracks what happened with the cash in the prior year. So it starts with an operating surplus and it has some ups and downs, but it'll identify where cash was spent and where it was not spent. And that also adds to the story of what transpired in the prior year. So those three statements are your main statements and items that the auditors will go over. Again, comparing the two thousand seventeen to the two thousand eighteen, on that document, the cash flow statement, as to why they're different, may be a good rationale or a good question to ask. Okay? The next statement that...
Jeff? Yes? Trustee McKee had a question.
Sure.
Jumping ahead to Schedule Five, this is on page fourteen. Were you going to talk about the the portfolio investments or, or are you, are you working your way down to that? Or were you going to talk about that?
No, we can, we can talk about it right now.
Okay, so that's Schedule Five on, on page fourteen.
Yes. So that's another, this is a breakdown of a line item that's on the Statement of Financial Position, which is page four. So instead of a note, it says Schedule Five, and it's a schedule that we're required to, to fill out. So for the most part, up into the notes, this is a document that Alberta Education gives us, and we have to fill out this area, right? So this is just a breakdown on the, on the potential cash, cash equivalents and portfolio investments that the jurisdiction has. And you can see at the top, there's, there's a cash, which would be just in our, our bank account. And as you go down, it talks about the second section is portfolio investments. So we, we have investments in very simple, in a very simple portfolio where they're not, they don't have a lot of high risk, but they do provide a little bit of interest associated with them. And so many of those dollars, for example, are IMR dollars where we have a larger amount of funding, our funds available, we will put in an investment if we don't anticipate spending them over a short period of time. Typically, we don't put them into a long-term investment, just so we have access to them in the, in the event that we need them. So you're, for the most part, they, they roll over on a one-year basis so that we have the ability to access them if we need to. They're always accessible, but it's whether we are able to maintain the interest level. The longer you can hold them in, the greater the amount of interest that you can earn on them. But this gives us the ability to learn, earn a little bit of interest as we hold on to these dollars for whatever targeted reason they might be for. So IMR is the, is the largest one of those. And so it just gives you more detail with regards to whether it's municipal, corporate or provincial fixed income securities and things like that. So... Makes sense? Yeah, go ahead.
So like you have a, a balance amount for, for two thousand seventeen and for two thousand eighteen. Will those balance values be, be reported in the following year or?
Yeah.
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 Is that why they're not showing up for any balance in, you know, like your provincial direct and guaranteed slot? I mean, like you've got balances in there for two thousand seventeen for several of those accounts, but you don't have them for two thousand eighteen?
Yeah, because, because we spent dollars on the capital of this building. So some of those resources were pulled out. In fact, all of them were pulled out in those areas. And so they're, they weren't, they were in, more in GICs. So if you look at the first section under other including GICs, that amount went up. So where we were investing, it required a certain threshold to maintain that investment, which was further down here, and we pulled it from that and put it more into GICs after we used some of those dollars because we didn't have the ability to meet that threshold any longer. So it jumped from here up to here more in cash and cash equivalents where it's more of a GIC-type investment.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. So those are good questions though, John, because you can identify where it's changed from one year to the other. That's where I said I wasn't gonna give you any context from the prior year to this year, but I just knew that one. So you might not know them all. But that's, that's exactly what you wanna look for in the changes from those types of things. So, okay? And so the schedules give you greater information, more detail with regards to items that are on the financial position, or Statement of Financial Position and the Statement of Operations. The auditor will go through all of these as well. The page nine is the statement or schedule of changes in accumulated surplus. This is a document that will give you information in regards to where, or the breakdown of the equity of a jurisdiction. So remember, I talked about the assets minus the liabilities is the, what remain, what's remaining is the equity of the, of the organization. And so here's where it would talk about reserves or your net assets. So column, the one, two, three, four, the fifth column is called investment in tangible capital assets. Everybody see that? That's the amount of money that we have invested in non-funded capital assets. So your buses, any non-funded buildings, this building is included in there. School buildings are funded by the provincial government. They are not in this, this area. These are your photocopiers and things of that nature, any type of that equipment. So as it's amortized, it comes out of there. But when you purchase it, it goes into their unrestricted surplus, which is the two over. Most would think that that's something that's not, that's, doesn't have a, it hasn't been assigned or allocated to any intended expenditure. However, we have held our capital reserves in that area for some time. So the opera, or the copier and buses would be in that area for unrestricted net assets or unrestricted surplus. And then your total operating reserves and your total capital reserves, that's the amount that is either in schools, in your instructional area or your maintenance, transportation and business and system admin. And the, the next page after this gives you a breakdown of that. But this is where those funds are held. And of course, they're broken down into certain things and the majority of those reserves would be in the maintenance area, which are again targeted for other purposes. Is there any questions with regards to that? Again, changes from one year to the other are good questions to ask the auditor. He'll probably go through that with you. So like I said, the next page is just the changes and where they're at. It's a greater detail of that area. Page eleven, capital revenue is just the breakdown of two the transactions in the funded capital area. This one's pretty complex. And typically the auditor will go through it, but there hasn't been a lot of transactions in this in the most recently because it's, it's funds that we received that haven't been expended, like funds that we received for capital that haven't been expended yet. And we don't have a ton of those. So there's not a lot there. Schedule three, which is on page twelve, gives you greater detail with regards to the area of operations. So this is revenues and expenditures and it breaks it out in instruction, plant operation, maintenance, transportation, board and system admin. And then it gives you totals. In this scenario, you can see the expenditures are broken down instead of by program, they're broken down by object. So it identifies how much funding has been expended in certificated staffing and, and certificated benefits. And then it breaks it down into non-certificated salaries and non-certificated benefits. And then service contract and supplies, amortization and so forth. So you can identify that the majority of the budget and the expenditure side of things is in the staffing, which would make sense in an educational facility or organization. So you can evaluate that and see if you have any questions in regards to what might have been expended in those areas. It goes into greater detail and on page thirteen, which is schedule four, which is the plant operation and maintenance area. It breaks it down into areas of custodial, maintenance, utilities, IMR, facility planning and so forth. Debt is also a capital item, which we don't have very much debt. We already talked about schedule five. Schedule six is our capital transactions. And Chad's going to speak to this one. Just kidding. Okay. This just identifies what our beginning balance of capital assets are, what we've expended, what we've written off, what we've amortized, come to a balance of what the net book value of, is of our capital assets. So if your vehicle is, is, if you anticipate your vehicle will last you five years, you paid forty thousand or fifty thousand of it, you'd amortize ten thousand a year. The book value, if you've only had it for one year, means there's four years remaining. You'd have forty thousand of those dollars as a book value remaining. That's exactly what this is, does with our capital assets. It identifies what the net book value is. Whether that's reasonable or not, I mean, that's how accounting works. Doesn't necessarily mean that you could get forty thousand for that vehicle. But that's how they recognize the usefulness of the life of an asset. Okay? So our vehicles are amortized over five years. Our buses are amortized over ten years. Typically, a brand-new building would be amortized over forty years. Modernizations would be twenty-five. Make sense?
Yep.
Okay. And finally, there's a schedule of remuneration and monetary incentives, which identifies the expenditures of the key individuals in the jurisdiction. And then the rest of the document is your notes. And that's where you get additional information with regards to the items that are within the financial statements. I won't go through them all. You can go through them and, and read them. It identifies what the accounting policies are. That might be something you want to read just before bed. But they identify how we treat or account for certain items within the financial statements. And again, the notes just provide additional information to those financial statements. I will send out, I gave a document a while ago to trustees with regards to potential questions that you could ask the auditors. I'll send that document out to you again, just to, to give you ideas as you look through the financial statements. Well, you'll get the financial statements in advance of the board meeting at the end of November. You'll have an opportunity to look at them and analyze them. And then you can maybe look at those questions and, and see if there's something that's pertinent if you haven't come up with your own questions at that point. Make sense? Any other questions? Jim?
So are we going to be using the same auditors that we've used forever and ever? Or are we thinking about a different one?
So that's a good question because one of the responsibilities of an audit committee, which is part of the legislation going forward, is to designate or determine the auditor, make a recommendation for auditor. Typically, you go through a process. It might be for a five-year term or a four-year term, depending, you know, on what the audit committee's terms of reference are and things of that nature. So at this point, it's too late to change the auditors now. They're coming tomorrow and starting the process for the last year's financial statements. But that's something we'll go through a different process as we prepare for next year's financial statements. First, we've got to get our audit committee in place based on the new legislation, terms of reference and so forth, and make that decision that way.
Thanks.
Yep. Any additional questions? Okay, if you do, if you have a question that you're not sure of, you know, whether you're asking it correctly or not, give me an email, send me a, or give me a call and I can help you ask the question that you're looking for. Typically, the intent of having an independent auditor come and speak to you is so there's kind of an arm's length from those who prepared the financial statement, which is myself and my, the people in my department. And so it gives you an opportunity for an independent, you know, opinion of those financial statements that we put together. But you can still use me as a resource if you want in, in that area. So. Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Jeff. Always need IV profen before your presentations. Okay, so we're going to move on to discussion item E three for now, which is regional school council. We have our first regional school council meeting of the year coming up. It's moved to October twenty-ninth now. So as you go to your school council meetings this month, please let the school chair and vice chair know that that meeting is coming up on October twenty-ninth. It's here. And we're going to be going over school council bylaws. So if you can ask them, I know quite a few in our ward didn't even know where their bylaws were. So you can help them locate them. They can discuss it with their principal. And if they can bring their bylaws and have them ready, we're going to go over the process of. It's at six thirty and there'll be a light supper. Does anyone have any questions about that? Trustee Mickey?
So the art, the art gala is at, at six o'clock that night as well?
Yeah.
In?
No.
At five o'clock? What?
They aren't on the same, let's see. Oh yeah, sorry, sorry. I was jumping ahead of myself. So school council is, regional school council is the twenty-third. And then the art gala is the twenty-ninth. So it will be right after our board meeting so that everyone, if you're able, can stay for that. So sorry for the confusion, John. Yes. It's, it's at six thirty.
Good things, yeah.
On the twenty-third and then the art gala will be happening on the twenty-ninth. Any other questions? Six thirty. Okay. We'll ask, move on to E four with trustee Burdette about Alberta Southwest update.
Okay, so that was the first time I ever got to go to an Alberta Southwest meeting and it was really, it was really quite interesting. The tone of the thing is the same as us. They're all functioning without a budget. And, and that's worrisome to them. They don't know how much money they have and, and how much money they're going to have to work with or what's getting cut. And they're trying to go forward, I mean, same as we are. The report from the town of Clarisone talked about their immigration pilot that they're part of. And the interesting part of that is it extends within, for twenty-five K around the community. So that also includes Granum. And I thought that was interesting because we have a school there that really could use some kids. And so part of that immigration pay could include Granum. So that was something that I noted. And other than that, they talked about all of their agreements between different municipalities and their agreement to share equipment and all this other stuff to try and lower their costs. And most of it was to do with municipalities. But they're in the same boat as we are. They're waiting for the government to bring down the budget so they know where they're going. And that's basically my report.
Thanks, Jim. That. Okay. Sorry. Trustee Mickey?
So during, during your discussions, did they say about how many families would be coming to Clarisone? Is it still around the two hundred? Like you said, the family or, or the total members of a family are included in that? And also what sort of preparations have they made in discussions with the schools about the additional students that would be being part of the school system?
So I didn't ask him the question about preparation. I don't know if they've done any for what kids are coming. It's probably, why do I get the echo? Sit back here. But yeah, there will be, I guess this program is designed to replace the foreign worker program. And the idea is instead of bringing foreign workers and parts of their families to immigrate whole families and communities into a community to replace, to do the jobs where there's jobs to be had, right? And so my understanding was that it could be single people if that's who's coming, but their goal is to try and get whole families at a time rather than, than like we've been doing with, with the, what did I just say? Forgot it. With the foreign worker program. And that's what I deemed from it.
Yep.
Have the, like, Mr. Sequin, have you been contacted, you know, with regard to that program? In dealing, you know, with the students that we, with the students that would be, you know, becoming part of the school system, probably as a, you know, dealing with a second language and so forth. That might put some, not strain, you know, but it might require some additional staffing as well. I'm just kind of thinking aloud here, but you know, there probably would be some, you know, consideration that would be needed to handle that many, you know, people coming into the school system perhaps.
Yeah, we've, we've discussed it at the senior management level, but we don't have any knowledge of who's coming or what ages of children or anything that might come with them. So at this time, you know, we, we understand that there may be additional resources that are, are required. But we don't know firm numbers or anything yet. So.
Thank you.
Trustee Tune?
Thank you. I'm a director on the Chamber of Commerce and we've been meeting a lot about this with the economic development committee. And we're actually striking a subcommittee we're meeting tonight to, to discuss the immigration project. And this is a couple of years, at, at least a year more off before anyone would, would actually show up. But I think it's really beneficial and Maro is seeing as a trustee, the, the complications, like you said, or the, the logistics of this that I intend that recommend to the, the group when it gets formalized and, and it gets a little further in the process. And they have applied for their grants and they know what resources they have. Recommend coming to the board and presenting the program to the board in a public meeting so we can hear all the details of it and, and hear what their, their plans are going forward with that. So.
Thanks, trustee Tune. Okay. If there's no other questions, thank you very much, trustee Burdette. And we will move on to E five, our transportation report by Christie Dericot Edwards. Dericot Edward?
So I might add that Phil is just out of the area. And so Christie, in advance, knew that she was going to come and present for Phil on this.
Thanks, Christie.
You're very, very welcome. Is this working? I think it's on. It's just not very loud. Hello? Hello? This one has a red light, so I'm going to go with that one's working. Okay, awesome. All right. So you should have each gotten our report in your package. So we set out in the table there just a breakdown of what routes and what we've got going on for each community over this coming, well, the past year. And so there's how many buses we have there, the number of students that we transported, how many kilometers per day. Of course, that's a bit of an approximation on days like, snow days like this. We've got drivers that are doing all sorts of fancy driving to, to get their students where they need to go and some roads are impassable. So for the most part, our division, we drive a hundred and fifty-eight thousand, six hundred kilometers per month. In a year, we do about a million, five hundred eighty-six thousand kilometers. So that's a lot of driving. And then we do about thirteen hundred plus extra. We call them extra trips, but that includes there are field trips. So the co-curricular and the extracurricular. Some of those trips, like about three hundred and sixty, sixty-five. Some of those trips, like about three hundred and sixty, sixty-five, those are in-town trips. So going to the swimming pool or the skating rink or, or those kinds of activities. Five hundred and eight were sports trips. And then four hundred and thirty-five were out-of-town field trips to all sorts of fun locations for the students. So those have not changed significantly from the previous year. We were right around the same amount from the year before. So the thirteen hundred, yes.
Those thirteen hundred trips, do you know how, what the amount of kilometers is that that's taking up?
Not really.
Okay.
Not in the moment that I stand here. I mean, we could, we could look at it and we could get that information if we, if you wanted us to present that. We could, totally could add that into our report. It's, it's generally on the trip requests that the schools submit. So they have to put in a, a trip kilometers in there. So it wouldn't be terribly difficult to, to add in. As well, First Student Canada provides, or provided, our services in Pincher Creek and Lumrec. And so that was part of the transportation as well as that they were, they were taking care of those seventeen routes out there. Over last year, we had some budgetary concerns and challenges. Obviously, you are aware of those. And so we worked really hard over the last year to do a thorough review of, of what we were spending in the transportation department. And it became very clear that our maintenance and repair and our contracted services were where our overages were primarily falling. So to combat these overages and to better manage our costs, we came to the decision that we would terminate the contract with First Student Canada. And we would move divisional buses into the Pincher Creek Lumrec area. And then we would also establish a divisional bus maintenance shop. So we now have that repair shop, which is located just behind Matthew Halton School there. We have a certified inexperienced mechanic. And he has already proven his worth a hundred times over. It's amazing the things that he's able to fix that are the mechanics that we've used. He just works on buses. And so he's got, he just knows what's wrong with them just listening to them drive into the yard. So it's been extremely positive thus far. So we're really, really happy so far into this arrangement. The repair shop is also, we were able to get a license. So we can do our own commercial vehicle inspections, which are required by the province. And so it's nice that we're able to accomplish that task ourselves because it's a hefty process with as many buses as we have, so. That leads into the next one, which is safety. Our buses have to go in, I believe it's every seventy-five hundred kilometers. They go in for an oil change and just a basic safety kinda once over. And then once every six months, they go in for their CVIP. So they get their inspections done. And that is a thorough inspection of top to bottom. Everything is checked, wheels, brakes, the whole, the whole meal deal. And so that happens twice a year. And we have to keep on top of those. If we have buses that are driving without them, that's a hefty fine if you get stopped by the Department of Transportation. So we obviously are going to avoid that. As well, our drivers are all required to hold a class-two driver's license and obtain the S endorsement within their first year. This has been a big project for us over the last year as well because of the new legislation that's come from the province. So we held three S endorsement courses to help get our drivers and our volunteers and anybody from the schools who are driving, teachers that, or EAs or anybody else who might hold a class-two license that have in the past driven kind of on the fly. We offered that course to them. And we had thirty-one participants who completed and passed the course. We are looking to host a few more of those this year and get, we probably have about thirty other people who are interested in doing that. So that is an ongoing initiative. And we have until July thirty-first of this, of 2020, to have all of our drivers with the S endorsement. So they can currently still drive without the S endorsement if they don't have it, so. But that is something that's coming. The safely onboard program was presented to our kindergarten to grade six students in October. Schools are supposed to help with our behavior issues and things that the children should be taught, how they should be behaving and their conduct on the bus and safety rules. So that's, that's part of our program. The buses and the students on them, it's considered a continuation of the school. And so any sort of discipline or anything that needs to happen is, is sent back to the administrators of the schools, which is to the great relief of our bus drivers. And in 2018, 2019, we actually had no accidents. We didn't have any incidents of any, any kind. So that's, that was very positive. We did however lose one engine and therefore one bus. So that's, that's about it for accidents there. We had nine new-to-us buses that were purchased through the Bus Center in Edmonton. We had, two of our older buses were decommissioned and they were taken to the junkyard. Our radio repeater signal was boosted to allow for better communication. Crow's Nest Pass was, has always been a challenge. It's just difficult to get radio signals. So since we've boosted that, we've had a lot better communication with those buses and drivers. As well as now the Pincher Creek and Lumrec area. With that boost, we're able to, I can hear them really well here. So that's really important and it's been very positive. And then as well, transportation department now has a part-time assistant standing in front of you. And then for our future initiatives coming up this year, we are implementing new software for our fleet maintenance program. So we now have our own repair shop, which poses its own challenges in making sure that our administrative procedures are in place and that we're keeping track of everything that needs to be happening with the buses and keeping proper records of all the maintenance that happens. So we have new software to help us with that. And we're currently working on getting that all implemented and all of the data, it's a lot of data. I have a lot of data in, input that has to go into it to make it work properly. So we're just still in the processes of getting that up and running. We are also implementing a new software program to help us with our extracurricular and co-curricular scheduling for field trips. Because we've taken on the Pincher Creek Lumrec area, we had seventeen buses, well, a little bit more than that, twenty-ish, that went out to that area that were, used to be available in, in the area for extra trips. And so now those buses aren't available in our fleet. They're running regular routes. So we have a much more restricted ability to do large-scale field trips and full school, moving large groups of, of kids is, is really, has become really difficult. So this new software that we have is, hopefully, we're gonna be able to use that to help with scheduling so that the schools can right away know that this program that they're gonna run either needs to run over multiple days or maybe we need to bring in drivers from other communities because there's just not capacity in their own community. But they're aware of that and they can see that a little bit more closely before they're even scheduling the trip. And then it helps us as well because it becomes quite crazy trying to move all the students like Sabre Days, Livingston School to Sabre Days every year. And they, we had that in September. And we were able to have that happen this year. However, it posed a lot of challenges. And there was a lot of scrambling trying to make sure that we had buses to go every which way. It's a great, great opportunity for the students. And so we wanna make sure that we continue to be able to offer that through the transportation department. And so we're working with our software to be able to help the schools and help ourselves stay on top of it and make sure that we're all organized and ready to go. Like I mentioned as well, we are offering two more S endorsement courses to meet our extended deadline. As well as we're just going to finish our setup of the shop in Pincher Creek. There's just a couple things left to do there. But for the most part, our mechanic is up and running. He's working very well, has lots to do. He's definitely not sitting around. And then the other thing we are looking at is investigating our route restructuring to reduce ride times. We did restructure what was happening in Pincher Creek and Lumrec and Crow's Nest Pass. Crow's Nest Pass, we brought down to one, we brought down from eight to seven routes. Lumrec went from five to four and Pincher Creek went from twelve to ten. So some of the routes have gotten significantly longer. And so we're trying really hard to kinda see how we can restructure and rework some of those routes so that they're a little bit more adequate in time so that the children aren't riding, you know, for crazy amounts and, and those kinds of things. However, we do have restraints within our own abilities as well, so. That's, that's what that, we're looking at that always, always, so. Other than that, that's, that's about all I have to present. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try my very best to answer them.
Trustee Tune?
Thank you. It sounds like you've had a really busy year with all the changes and everything.
Yeah, it's, it's been intense.
I hear from drivers that subs continue to be a concern, availability. Is that something that you could give us some approximate numbers? Or has there been a change in the last year, year or so about the number of subs available?
We always have a lot of turnover in our subs. A lot of it depends on other industries and their capacity for employment elsewhere. And so sometimes we have an abundance because people are around and they're willing. And other times they're gone. We have prob, I wanna say about forty-five spare drivers on our roster at this point. Of those, we probably have about twenty that are fairly active and regularly available and drive for us quite often. So it's, it's a challenge and it will continue to be a challenge. It will always be a challenge. So, yeah.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you so much for coming and presenting. We're, it's awesome to have a full year where we didn't have any accidents or anything. So that's exciting and getting our kids to school. And I appreciate hearing that you guys are working on ride times. I know that's a constant concern, so. It's great that you're always looking at it. Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Okay. So we'll move on to E six with Mr. Feller on weekdays till six.
So over the last few years, we've had lots of conversations. And it's been exciting to know the level of commitment from the board to support wellness within the jurisdiction. Knowing the commitment of the board, we've been looking for strategies for things that we can do to support our staff and our students. Last year, we had an opportunity to go to the Shaping the Future Conference. And they talked a lot about different strategies that could be implemented. One of those particular strategies was something that I would like to talk to you about today. We know that our, our vision as a board, as a jurisdiction, Nikki, next one, please, is to be leaders in providing quality education to rural students in a dynamic learning environment. And we know what that actually takes. It's, it's a lot of work to be able to do those things. Next slide, please. We also know that there are lots of things that are starting to get in the way of people being able to do their best work. One of those things is that we've noticed that there's an increase, an increasing number of emails that are coming at all times of the day and especially on the, in the evenings and on the weekends. Next slide, please. We really would like to ensure that after, after our activities include time with our families, our friends, having time for exercise and other work-life responsibilities. Next slide, please. And we know that we are one hundred percent committed when it comes to staff health and wellness as well as community and student wellness. Next slide, please. We know that it takes a lot to come to work every day and be our best selves. So we want our, our staff to be healthy, well-rested and inspired. And with that, good things will happen. Next slide. This is what I would like to bring to your attention and something for you to consider is the opportunity for what was called weekdays till six. This is one of the practices that Chinook's Edge was using and shared at the Shaping the Future Conference. And it was something that really, really resonated with us. And we thought that it was something that was actually doable and would demonstrate our commitment to the rest of our communities as to how important wellness is in our school jurisdiction. Next slide, please. So the proposal is that in Livingston Range, non-emergency emails or texts are sent prior to six PM on weekdays. There'd be no evenings and no weekends. This would give us time to be able to focus on the work that we are already engaged in and not being distracted by things that we can, we can do at a different time. So again, it is, it is just a practice, not a policy. And we believe that it would be a very good practice. We know that late-night email and text exchanges can be troublesome for all of us, students, families, staff, for a number of reasons. There are a lot of, there is a lot of research out there right now that has connected mental health issues, concerns, to being plugged in all the time. And so we would like to have a time where we can unplug. We want to make sure that our staff are ready to deliver the very best to their students each and every day. And we believe this will be one of the strategies that will allow us to do that. We also recognize that weekdays till six would be a shift in our division. But we care about the wellness of our students, families and staff. In the end, we're convinced that this is in the best interest of our students that we serve. And we would like to know your thoughts to see if this is something that you would be willing to champion and support as we move through the divisional direction with wellness.
Thank you, Richard. I love this idea. And I think it's so important that as the division, we're sending this message, that we wanna make sure that our staff and students and admin are taking time for themselves and for their families. So I think this is a great idea. We live in such a beautiful part of the world where there's so many things to get out and do. And I love that idea of encouraging our staff to take that step back and everyone in our division to take that time. So I'm, I'm really excited to see this and see it be put into our practices.
Is there any other trustees who have thoughts or questions? Trustee Mickey?
So the, the program would mainly be focusing on staff and as well then? Like you said, is there, I mean, a lot of staff been, so do the emailing or, or texting after hours? Is there a problem with the school division dealing with this? Because, I mean, myself, I think the program is a, seems to be breaking up. I think the program actually good, what?
Just back up from the mic, it has a noise gate.
I think the program. Hello? Hear me? No. Okay. We'll try this, we'll try this one. Well, the program itself, I think, is a good one. I mean, especially for the staff and, and probably, I don't know. I don't want to put you on the side, on the spot here, but with the senior administration, are you in agreeance with this program as well then? I mean, I would think that you would be. I guess that's my question.
Well, I can speak from a personal perspective and give you a little bit of a story. My daughter was in provincial championship this summer, or just, sorry, in, in the spring. And something had come through on my email and I wanted to respond to it. And as I was responding to it, I missed her try at a provincial level. And I realized at that time, I'm, I'm not focused on the right thing right now. And so to be able to move those distractions away is something that I think is really important for all of us so that we can be with our families when we're with our families.
I certainly would agree with that. Yeah. Thank you for, for that response. Yeah, it's very well stated.
So if we are all in agreement that we will champion this, I would just like to share with you, Nikki, the last slide just so that you're aware of what that rollout will look like. And we've, we've, will engage Carly to help us with this as we roll it out forward. But with your support, after the board meeting, we would share the documents and resources with our admin council and our wellness champions. As soon as the school staff have been informed, weekdays till six can be implemented in that school. We will have an official website and social media post that will be made October thirtieth from the division office. And then the initiative will be in place division-wide by November first. Schools can use prepared resources in their newsletters and social media as soon as they implement and no later than November first. So we really want this to be an LRSD community initiative.
Trustee Tune?
Thank you very much for this. This is, I think, is amazing. And it's gonna, I think, lead, lead to a lot more changes that as we bring forward these type of initiatives. The work-life balance is something that we've championed and as a board, when we've talked with our superintendent of how important we feel that is, right from when we hired the superintendent. And I, I think that us as a board, as we are reflecting on this, this is gonna be challenging for us to, to try and implement some of these things. For some of us farmers who are, are. For some of us farmers who are, work late nights and send out emails way too late and way too early. But I think that as we're doing that, it will allow us to more focus fully on, on our other commitments, our family and our, our work. And I, I think it's important for us to, to try and implement these things. I was reminded when we were talking about this of, of a lot of situations where you are distracted by thinking that you need to reply to these things. And I'm sure there are emergency situations where things arise and need the attention, especially of our superintendent and our, our board chair and things of that. But there's so many other times where we create that false sense of, of that urgency and, and that can lead to stress and, and degrade our, our personal wellbeing. So I think that this is great. And I, I'm excited to champion this as a board member.
Thank you, Trustee Toon. Thank you, Mr. Feller. It was, I'm so excited to see this, like I said. And, and when we discuss this a little bit, you think, you know, I think sending an email is not a big deal, but it's an invitation to you to work in the middle of your, you know, your daughter's game or whatever. And when I think about it that way, it makes it so much easier for me to put it off because I don't want to invite anyone to work on the weekends. And so this is exciting and I'm excited to see what Carly brings forward. So, and, and as we move forward with that. We'll move on to E7 with Trustee Toon in refer, in reference to the art gala.
Thank you. It was mentioned earlier by our superintendent. And it is on the 29th of October at 6:30 here in JR Davis Building. And this is one of my favorite events of the year, the opportunity to see the amazing talent showcased from our entire division, including all our schools, our colony schools, our small schools, our, our large high schools. And to have their families participate in this is just amazing. So I, I would ask everyone to make sure that it's on your calendars and, and invite everybody to come out. The invitations have gone out to the parents and families already and encourage everybody to, if you haven't attended it before, to attend it. It's a really great event to showcase the, the talent in our division.
Thank you, Trustee Toon. Is there any questions on that? Okay. We will turn the ti- turn the time over to Carly for our communication plan.
I've secretly been really wanting to use the microphone. Okay, great. Thanks for having me today. I want to talk with you a little bit about the communications plan for 2019, 2020, based on information from senior admin and the board and other things that I know are coming up this year. I've put this communication plan together. This will guide my work and promote the ongoing efforts of the division throughout the year. So division communications are necessary to provide information for branding integrity and to provide leadership across the division. The purpose of this communication plan is to guide internal and external decisions that we make and content that we produce, to reflect our mission, vision, values, and to contribute to a culture of trust and openness and, and honesty and respect. The goal of this communication plan, as stated here, is to promote our key messages and brand through effective internal and external communication using appropriate channels and collaboration. By so doing, we will inform, celebrate, and expand. So I'd like to talk a little bit about the six objectives of this communication plan. Number one is already well underway with our plans for the re-mission and vision and values at the board retreat in November. Throughout the process, we will communicate with staff, parents, students, and community partners, and then share our fresh, relevant, and impactful mission and vision once it is finalized. The second point is our new website, which will launch January 1st, 2020. We're really excited about that. I'm currently working on new content for the website to match the new style. And we're going through and cleaning things up a lot. So the new website will hopefully be clean and really accessible and relevant. And it will be a central hub for division communications and promotion. The third objective is to have engaging social media. So right now, we are on Twitter and YouTube. Since I started in January, we've increased our Twitter followers by 10%, and I'd like to increase that another 10% by June of 2020. In a typical month, I'm creating about 25 original Twitter posts. And as we'll talk about in a minute, we have plans to increase our YouTube content as well. We are currently working on claiming an official Livingston Range School Division Facebook page. There's been some fakers out there. And so once we get all of that cleaned up and tidied up, then the plan would also be to launch a division official Facebook page. So we currently have a videographer working on three more school promotional videos for Horace Allen, Isabel Selin, and Crozens Consolidated. These videos will really highlight the all-season culture of these schools and their awesome programming and will be added to the three videos that we've already done for Livingston School, Ski Academy, and Willow Creek Composite. The fifth objective is to develop a step-by-step checklist for integrated crisis communication so we know who does what, when, in the event of an emergency. This plan will allow us, no matter who is or is not in the office, to provide a planned and workable way to communicate through and about any crises in our schools. And then the sixth objective is new identity branding. So once we have our shiny new mission, vision, and values, we're going to want a shiny new brand identity to go with it that reflects who we are in 2020 and beyond. This will be in place by the end of the school year so that we can start 2020, 2021 with, with enthusiasm, with our new vision and our new branding. The key messages of this communications plan then will be our mission, vision, values, the board priorities, and a select number of initiatives, as you see on the screen here. And as things come up through the year, we can, we can modify this a little bit. But these three things are going to be where we focus our attention in our communications.
So the one on the Heaven and My Land Experience, could you just expand on that for me, please?
I can't really speak to that right now because I only know that it is, but I don't know what it is. So I think that will be forthcoming. Maybe, I don't know if there's someone on senior admin.
Maybe we'll just have Richard speak to it.
Okay, thanks.
We're super excited to be able to offer some of this type of learning. It was part of our innovative First Nation Education Grant. In year three, we were to be putting together a land-based program to support our students in gradu- in graduation by providing them with credits that were meaningful and authentic. I'll speak a little bit to that in my next presentation, if that's okay.
Great. Thank you. Okay, next slide, please. So our target audiences for this communication plan and for all the communication that we do throughout this year will include internal staff, the board, senior admin, division office staff, school-based staff, system-based staff, and students, as well as parents, and that includes school councils. Community includes local business owners and leaders, potential student families, local and provincial government and media. And our crisis audience would be all of the above as applicable, plus law enforcement, first responders, and health professionals. So strategies, I've outlined them more in detail in the communications plan, which I believe came with all your package today that Nikki sent out. So you can look a little bit deeper at those. I like to follow an approach of who will do what by when. So that's how the strategies are laid out in that document. Depending on which objective it is, we'll use different things as appropriate. And you can, you can look through those strategies and hopefully get an idea of what we will use. They'll be mostly, as you see on the screen here, what we have traditionally done. And we will also be using the outside vendors like the videographer, the facilitators for the mission, vision, values, and graphic designer for the identity branding. These six key deliverables are what I will get to contribute to through the course of the next year. So this new mission, vision, and values that you will be working on as a board, the new website, an active social media presence, the three new school videos, an integrated crisis communication plan, and our new identity branding. I believe that this is a reasonable and attainable goal for the time that I am here in the office. And I think it's also six really proactive and exciting things that we can look forward to this year. As you'll see here, these six key deliverables are already captured in either the current communications budget or separate already-approved budgets. So there's no additional investments that we're talking about as it relates to the communication plan. So I'm really excited to continue working on these priorities, which I believe will position Livingston Range School Division as a true educational and culture leader. Do you have any questions about the communication plan?
No, thank you, Carly. It looks amazing. We're really excited for all the discussions we're going to have coming up at our board retreat and all the vision, mission, and stuff that is going to go out. It's, it's amazing. It's really ambitious.
It's a really exciting time for the things that we're working on and to be able to share these initiatives and priorities with our division family.
This communication plan looks really great. I'm excited to get started. And do you think as we move forward and work on getting it rolled out, do you think that by September and having it all come out for next year, do you think that will give teachers and staff enough time to really buy into it and get behind it?
I think that by getting that information out to admin council and staff by the end of the year, I know June is a really busy time, but to get that to them so they have the whole summer to, to think about it, to use it in their plans, so principals can say, you know what, we want to take some of these mission, vision, values and this new branding and, and the exciting things that are happening in the division, and we want to use those in our schools. I think it's a really good time to roll it out at the end of this school year. And then there may be some opportunities then at perhaps divisional day to, to capitalize on the audience that we have to, to share these messages of the things that we've worked on this year that will set us up for great success in the future.
Perfect.
Yeah. One thing I'll add as well is part of the plan for the board retreat with the, the vision and the mission work that the board will be involved in and our facilitators is, part of their plan is to come back and work with our administrators in the spring once we've gone through our process and help administrators understand what they can do to help roll this out so that all of their students, their staff, their school community knows about our new vision and mission. And so that will be part of the plan, is that they will assist with the rollout. And whether that, some of that work is done prior to the end of next school year or they know what they need to do and hit the road running in September, but it will be part of the plan.
Thank you, Daryl. Trustee Long?
Carly, this is about communication, but maybe not directly related to this. I've always hoped that we could have at least a monthly article in each community's local newspaper after our board meetings. Is that possible? That between you and Nikki, you would, excuse me, send something out to each of the local newspapers?
So would that be a paid article or information we send to the newspapers? And if they want to pick that story up and run with it, they do that?
Yes. I don't know.
Okay.
But I, I just think it'd be good PR and, and good for the public. And, no, sorry. We have the media here, but there isn't something at least every month in all the local newspapers.
Great.
You know, I just, perhaps something could be put together after our meetings and...
Right. And would that be probably the key messages from those meetings?
The three key messages might be enough.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What do you see as the value of newspaper communication for the people in your ward?
The stakeholders knowing what we're doing and knowing that we are actually doing something.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah. So that they, you know, first and foremost, they'd know what the school board does. So many of our, our, our public, they have no idea what a, a school trustee does.
Do you find there's, and maybe this isn't the right time for this conversation, but do you find there's a difference between, when you say the community doesn't know, between parents and then maybe people without children in school right now of, of they do, is there a difference in those two groups understanding?
Absolutely. More of the people who don't have students in school would be more ignorant of, of what trustees do.
Right. Okay. Thanks, Trustee Long. I think these are some great conversations that we can have at our board retreat and further on along the communication plan to find what is the best way to reach all of our stakeholders. So it's a great time to live in LRSD division and, and be a part of this new branding and this new vision and, and these mission statements. So it's very exciting. So thank you, Carly.
Thank you.
Mr. Perry, are you ready for some enrollment updates? Okay. Yeah. Some more exciting information here. So we'll, we'll go to, back up to E1 and, and get that presentation from Mr. Perry.
Can you see that? You guys can see that on the screen? Okay. All right. So Anthony threw a curve at me this year. He tried to do things more efficiently, which he certainly did. But my presentation is going to be adapted to what he's done to improve our efficiencies in our office with regards to the collection of enrollment information for the schools. So this document here that you see is a Google Doc that actually amalgamates all the information from the schools with regards to enrollment. And then we go through and verify the information individually to ensure that they're recorded or that it matches what the Alberta education system has. So this document here, I'm just gonna, it, it's broken out by different areas so that we can identify for funding purposes where, and, and so that we can identify the funds that will come in based on the enrollment and their, their criteria. will come in based on the enrollment and their criteria. So the total enrolled students are in this section right here. I even have a mouse that I can show you where that's at. Okay? Then we have to take off in order to see what the provincially funded students are. We have to take off home education, international students, and then First Nation students coming off reserve to attend our schools, which provides us with the amount that the provincial government funds. It also gives us the ability to see how many, break these out into different areas as to how many we have in each of these areas. So the one thing that we haven't got in here right now is the teacher directed. So the teacher directed are the students that may not attend at a school, but they still get full support from our teachers. And so they're not considered homeschool. They still get a program directly provided by our teachers and not just the homeschool side of things. So the number are included in here, but I'll tell you where the adjustments need to be. So if I go through, these are by grade and identifies all those areas by grade. When we get down to this colored section right here, it's yellowish, orangish, whichever you see, the total number of students is listed above, and then the next row down is FTE. So FTE means we take into consideration ECS students or kindergarten students who are only part-time, so they're .5. So you can see overall, we'll have 3,671 students attending Livingston Range programs. The FTE of that, when you take into account ECS is .5, is 3520, and we haven't been over 3520 for a long time. So the story of today is that there's an increase in enrollment in the programs for Livingston Range School Division. Then we have what the prior year numbers were and the difference there, the spring numbers and the difference there. So the one thing that I need to take into consideration is these budget numbers for teacher directed are not in here, so these numbers have to be decreased by that number over there. Okay, so I'll go through that with you. So yeah, go ahead John.
Looking at this, I don't see the Colony Schools has been one of the columns here. Are they included in the...
Yeah, I'll go through another document that identifies the schools, communities, and kind of the one that I've done in the past.
Okay, thanks.
This is all the students together, so they're all in here. The budgeted numbers are all in there as well. So when you look at where we are overall from the prior year, we're, you have to take 15 off of that, so we're 62 students up from the prior year. That might be depend, various where, various areas. So we're actually 12 students up in the homeschool area from the prior year. We're down three international students. We're down 20 and a half First Nation students, but provincially funded, we're up this less the 15 over here. So 62 and a half students, we're up 62 and a half students in provincially funded, 52 students overall. When you look at our budget, or sorry, what we projected in the spring for this year, so our schools were somewhat conservative, we're, Darrell do the math, 84 and a half subtract 17, 20, 60, 62, 60, 65 and a half, 60, 67 and a half, 67 and a half. Don't have a calculator. I should have had this done before. So we're up 67 and a half students from what was budgeted, so 52, 51 or 52 from last year, but 62 and a half from the spring budget. So we're up five students from what we projected for homeschool students. We're still down three students from international. We projected the same as before. We're only down half a student from what was projected for First Nation students and the remainder, the net of that, so 66 students is, we're up in provincially funded. Does that make sense to everyone? Okay, I'll show you just a couple other documents. So this one's from the prior year, and at the bottom it has a net difference of 51. So you can see the community of Nanton is actually up 19 students in total. AB Daily is down seven, they anticipated being down based on their ECS enrollments, but there was a large class moving from AB Daily over to JT Foster, and for the most part, those students were maintained. And so JT Foster is actually, from the prior year, up 26 students for a net of 19 in the community, which is really good to see. Staveley is down four and a half students from the prior year. Claris Home is up one and a half students. Granum is down eight from the prior year. Again, in those small communities, I mean, year to year can have significant changes, fluctuations. Fort McLeod is up 10 and a half students. Pinter Creek is down seven. Livingston School is up 19 students. Crow's Nest Pass is down two students overall from the prior year. Outreach is up 12. Colony students are up 11 and a half. Homeschool students are up 11 from prior year. Teacher directed program is down eight students from the prior year, and international is down four from the prior year for a net of 51, different from, up from the prior year. So you can see where the areas are, there's outreach, colony, there's significantly more homeschool students, and then the difference would be throughout the schools as well. What's probably more important is what we projected from the prior year and where we are now. And again, we're up 84 and a half students from what we projected. So four and a half in Nanton from what was projected, half a student in Staveley ECS, half a student down in Claris Home, three and a half up in Granum, 11 up in Fort McLeod, 11 up in Pinter Creek, 10 up in Livingston, 21 and a half up in Crow's Nest Pass, 27 up in Outreach, four up in Colonies, five up in homeschool students, and 10 down in the teacher directed, and three down in international for a net of 84 and a half less 17, so, because those aren't in the budget numbers. So 66, I think, 66 and a half. Any questions about enrollment? So the, actually the, the, a lot of the elementary school enrollment increases is due to ECS being higher in the ECS area, especially Horace Allen, which had 13 and a half, WA Day Canyon even there as well, but there has been some shiftiness of some of the students that are coming from within that community, from other schools to our school. That's the major component in there. A lot of the schools actually were very close to budget as to what they received. So if you look at Nanton, they almost budgeted right on, Staveley right on, Claris Home, which is a larger, one of our larger communities, right on, Granum right on, and the areas where they were different was mostly ECS in those areas. So any questions around enrollment? It's good news for the enrollment side of things with regards to our schools. We are fortunate at this point that we have the ability to, instead of trying to find other ways to cut resources, we have the ability to add resources to the schools at this particular time of the year. So that's always a good thing, adding additional staff out at the schools to support the additional students that they have and the needs that they have is significant. One of the big changes this last year was that we allocated the majority of the staff, support staff and teacher staff together out to the schools, and we found that to be a good process, as Richard and Darrell have talked to the schools about need and where they need to, the need needs to be addressed. We now have, with an additional enrollment, we have the ability to go and talk about need again with the additional students that have come in, so.
Thank you. Has, this question would be for superintendent, has there been any additional staff assigned or since the enrollment has come out, higher in those areas that was higher than projected?
Yeah, I can certainly answer that. We initially, for example, there was a lot of transients. I can't remember the exact numbers, like 39 students moved out of Matthew Halton, families moved out of the community, but then, you know, just about as many came in, but they came in in different places than they left. And so there was a hotspot of some large classes. I think there were close to 40 students in grade nine and another 44 in grade seven. And because the staffing had already been kind of set in place, they found that they needed some additional staffing to be able to make sure that the class sizes were appropriate and we can be effective, and we had the additional, we anticipated that we would have the additional resources based on some early numbers. And so right away, we were able to put in another halftime teacher in Matthew Halton. I mean, it takes a little while to hire that person and to get them started, but that is in place there. Lenbrook, you can see the numbers, they continue to rise there, and so we were able to add additional staff there. I'm trying to think of the other ones. WA Day had basically a full kindergarten class show up that they were unexpecting, unanticipated, and so we were able to add another class of ECS. And then yesterday, based on these most recent numbers, we met as a senior team and we had previous conversations with administrators out in our schools, where's your hotspots? What is it that you need if we have the dollars to be able to support that? Granum, I'm trying to think of the other schools. Crow's Nest Consolidated with some additional FSL support, so some are support staff, some are teachers. I know Granum, there's a couple other schools. Oh, JT Foster increased their learning support time, and I think there's one more out there. But yes, we were able to, we anticipate with the government announcement of the budget coming October 24th, that, you know, we will be funded for enrollment growth. That is something that back in the spring, we didn't think would apply to us, but I think due to a lot of efforts over the course of the year or the years, you're starting to see that we're able to retain our students and maybe even attract some new. For example, with the home education, you know, we had 13 students last year, and this year it's up to 25. I think that's the numbers. And so that's that consistency and the efforts that we made as we went around to talk about home education in LRSD. And so we're getting students that were having those programs delivered by someone external to us. I think you're starting to see at the early ages, the fruits of our early learning coordinator in Lisa Furukawa, working with preschool and daycares and things out there in the community and establishing those relationships and developing those programs to be high-quality programs that people are now taking advantage of and seeing the programs and availabilities that are offered to them here in Livingston Range. You know, our principals have been working hard to try and make their schools safe and caring places, and you can see that on our accountability pillar results that Chad will share with you next month as well. So it's a lot of things that are happening throughout our jurisdiction, the flexibility of programming, the focus on early learning and home education, along with the efforts that our school and administration is making that I think is helping to be able to attract more students to our division and keep the ones that we have.
As we increase and have more students coming, which is wonderful, do we have room in our schools for them? Are any of our schools close to capacity, or do we still have lots of room in most of them?
The majority of our schools, we have room and space in them. We have other programs that may take up space that we might have to change how we do things, but for the most part, our schools do have the space to accommodate increases in numbers. The one school that is challenged is, right now is Staveley. Staveley is one school where we may seriously need to look at bringing in a modular unit to, or make a modular request to add there, depending on how the numbers continue to come in for the ECS program. And this year, they came in again, and so they continue to maintain the level where they may need additional space, but that's the only one I can think of right now that might need.
Is there any other questions for, yeah, Trustee Long?
Wasn't Livingston like our second on our list of renovating, adding to?
Yeah, it certainly is. And Chad just leaned over and said Livingston would be a close second with regards to need of additional space. Modernization is different than a request for modular space. So a request for modular space may not be on our priority listing. It may be, it's through a different process that we go about doing, requesting that. And that's a different process every year. So we're actually looking at right now that process opening up and starting, whereas our capital plan is in March and April. So Livingston continues to be in the same spot that it was on our priority as far as capital plan.
Thank you Jeff. It's awesome to see so much new enrollment and to see Anthony doing some great work.
I told Anthony the other day, we were in a meeting, and he answered a question that I didn't know the answer to, and I told him afterwards, never make me look bad again. All in fun. He didn't.
Well, thank you. So yeah, Trustee Mickey?
With regards to the, you're talking about modules and that. In regards to the public site that went through in Claris Home, the community voted in favor of the town borrowing $2.8 million to initiate the daycare and the preschool program. And I'm still somewhat curious about that, what's going to happen with the module that's currently there and also with the, and that's called the after-school program. I guess they're going to go through and get the architects to draw up some plans or so. I guess the process is still evolving. I'm just wondering if you've had any thoughts with regards to what's going to happen with the after-school program there as well? Is that part of the process that's going to become part of the town's rebuilding there?
Maybe we could get an update on that at a later meeting?
Sure. I can respond to one component of that with regards to the current modular that's there. We're currently looking into that. We don't know exactly. We own that facility, and the purpose of that facility is for early learning, daycare, and so forth. So we're currently looking into restrictions and so forth as to whether we need to maintain that or whether there's potential of the town taking that over and being able to operate the daycare part of that as well. So given the fact that their initiative is to do that in other facility part, components of that project too, so it's a work in progress.
Thank you.
Okay, so I think we'll just take a five-minute health break and then come back. Yep. And then come back for Richard's presentation. So we're going to go ahead and have our presentation from Mr. Feller. All right. So we have F1, which is the Wisdom and Guidance Council update. We're gonna, can I make that motion? Does someone want to make the motion?
I'll motion to table.
We're gonna make a, Brad's making a motion to table that until the policy committee has met. So all in favor? Thank you. And Board Policy 4, we already tabled. Okay, perfect. So we'll, yeah, and with the F3, we didn't have anyone send in any requests for professional learning at this point. So we'll just go ahead and go to our career practitioner report. Yep.
There's the Indigenous Unumercy Day on this coming Friday.
Do we have permission to, to attend that from the board? Or do I need permission to attend that? Or is that just open? I can just attend that?
So we discussed having all PD opportunities emailed in. And then we would just be able to bring them and approve them at the meeting without, um, having to discuss them. Trustee Toon?
I don't know if, is that the divisional, uh, day reference? Where is it located at?
It's at FP Walsh.
Was that something that board members were invited to or is that just?
Sorry, I was planning on attending in, because it's in my ward and then it's just part of my monthly. So I was planning on attending, but not as a PD.
If you want to make it just part of my renumeration, that's fine. I, I was basically just asking for, uh, to advise the board that I would like to attend that session.
Okay.
If that's okay.
Trustee Long?
Can you give us more information about what it is?
I'm afraid I, I can't. Is there someone who can help me out with that?
You don't know what it is?
Say that again? Yeah, well, I know of it and it says it's Indigenous Renewancy Day, but other than that, I'm not, I don't really know what the agenda is for it.
Trustee Long?
Since he doesn't know what it's all about, I say he doesn't go. I vote no.
Thanks, trustee Long. Mr. Feller has more information on it for us.
Uh, it was an opportunity that, uh, through our numeracy lead Kathy Charchen, as well as Sandra Lamouch getting together to take a look at how we can legitimize First Nation ways of knowing and being, and specifically Blackfoot right now. So those two people working together to bring a learning opportunity to build the capacity within our school, uh, within our schools by bringing in Dr. Libra Littlebear and I, Dwayne, I can't remember. Can't remember the other gentleman's name. But it's taking a look at how you can apply, uh, or how numeracy was applied in Indigenous, um, communities prior to the Western Way.
Good, thank you for that.
Okay, um, trustee Long?
I move that trustee Poitras and trustee McKee be, uh, given permission to go to this session.
Trustee Toon?
So to clarify, this is under the professional learning, uh, section. That it would be using their PD dollars if they so choose. Okay?
Just for clarification. Just for clarification, I will be attending under my monthly renumeration, um, because it's, it's in my school and it's something that I would attend, um, not as a Wisdom and Guidance member. So, John, just to clarify, are you asking to use your PD dollars to attend?
It would be a part of my, uh, renumeration as well.
Then there's no permission needed, correct? Okay, then you're fine to attend.
Yeah, then we don't need to approve it, so I take away my motion.
Okay, thank you, Greg, and thank you, John. Uh, if there's no other PD requests at this time? Okay, and just for future reference, just to remember, look ahead and make sure that you email in your PD request so everyone can take a look at, at the request before the meeting. Okay. Richard will have the presentation from you now. Thank you.
Okay, well, I'm very excited. As part of, um, my new role, um, I was able to, uh, be able to participate in learning with and alongside the career practitioners earlier in September. And so getting to know, uh, a little bit more of what they do and in supporting our students, it's been, it's been amazing. We have three career practitioners. We have Letty Crosskey, who serves West Meadow, Willow Creek Composite, Staveley, AB Daily, and JT Foster. And you'll notice that some of those schools are elementary schools. And that's part of, uh, one of the interesting things that they've been doing is really engaging with our elementary schools. Uh, we have Christie Blazel, or sorry, Bezelle, who serves Granum, WA Day, FP Walsh, Canyon, Matthew Halton. And we have J-, a new career practitioner this year, Jennifer Zebert, who serves Livingston, Horace Allen, Isabel Allen, and Crow's Nest Consolidated. When we take a look at some of the services that they provide, um, I've broken it out into three areas. One is universal, things that are, are of value for everybody. And we have targeted things that hit certain groups of people, and then we have individualized, which is for a very small group. These are similar to what we do in learning support. And so I'm just going to make sure that everything that we articulate from learning services, you'll be able to see universal strategies, targeted strategies, and, um, individualized strategies. So there's been a focus on working in classrooms, doing presentations and engaging students in upcoming events. They also have been assisting high school students in learning about and applying for scholarships. Lots of classroom visits to promote career services. Uh, some of them have already presented career exploration activities and discussions to students in grades two through six, um, both at Staveley Elementary and Isabel Allen. And this is something that all of them will do in their, in their, uh, communities, um, where they serve. They've been planning for, um, this is an exciting event that I, I think, uh, would be beneficial for all communities. But it's an event called It Doesn't Grow on Trees. And it's going to be something that's happening November sixth from five till six-thirty at Willow Creek Composite. It's about financing post-secondary education. So there'll be speakers to share information about RESPs, Alberta Student Loans and Grants, scholarships, highlighting local scholarships, and this is going to be a free event with, uh, dinner served, but registration required. They have been sitting down with their administrators, getting to know the needs of, of, um, their buildings, to better understand each of the individual school's needs, their goals in regards to career services, and how best to support students and staff in that area. They've been doing a lot of networking and collaborating with school staff and community members, and collaborating with counselors and youth workers to ensure well-rounded student support. So even though we have these career practitioners, they're not working in isolation. They're working collaboratively with other members of their school community. Uh, they advertise and promote all the great initiatives and programs available to our students via multiple platforms. So they do things like school announcements, newsletters, websites, um, social media, career services boards, that kind of thing. Uh, some of them have been doing lunch hour workshops to address student needs, um, that were indicated through one-on-one initial meetings. There's a lot of curriculum development for K to six right now and doing industry spotlights at the schools and implementing, um, implementing them throughout the year. Each of this kind of looks differently in each of our schools, but the intent and purpose is the same. I'm going to show you a few pictures of what was happening with interactive displays that were set up off-site during a place-based learning day at Bobi Lake. And this was brought back to the school, uh, set up, and set up as a display. This was done in Isabel Allen. So they were doing some career exploration. And you'll see just on the side of the picture, there's things like wildlife technologist, things that, that students are interested in, um, and how that would apply in the context of earning a living. So moving on to the targeted types of activities. Our career practitioners meet individually with all grade twelve students to start post-secondary applications, if that's what they're choosing to do, um, or in applying for scholarships, but also work, moving into the workforce as well. They have a discovery day in health services, in health sciences with eight students attending. They're only, they are restricted to four per school and there's a waitlist. So a lot of these events that they are putting on are, uh, well-represented by our students. They're also coordinating students to attend the World of Choices event in Lethbridge. Transition meetings with grade twelve students are taking place, working towards implementing a ten-to-twelve system to ensure that all aspects of career development are addressed over the course of three years. So trying to make sure that the program is not just a, a grade twelve thing, that we're really taking, um, strides in supporting our students all the way through. Because we know that they have to have certain, um, milestones met before they can move on. This one was really interesting to me. I, I hadn't really thought about it from the specialized or individualized perspective. One of our career counselor, career practitioners is working in conjunction with Foothills Inclusion to provide additional career development assistance to students with disabilities. And, uh, I thought that was just a really excellent way to move, be moving forward. Also, working in conjunction with Prospect Youth Services to support, uh, two students who are living independently and working part-time, um, to help them access government supports. So there's a wide range of services that our career practitioners do. And, and a lot of that is, um, is building those relationships with the outside community agencies to support individuals. This is hot off the press as of, as of yesterday. Frank might know what that picture is of at the back, and some of you might know. I think Greg's old enough to know. So types that, right? Anyway, um, we, we had an opportunity back in July. Katie Mahone from EverActive Schools contacted me to see if we would be interested in supporting a grant through RBC Future Launch and Funding to Employment and Social Development Canada, as well as youth employment and skill strategies that would support marginalized students in our area. Supporting them to move into the workforce while at the same time receiving real applicable training and credits. So obviously, we were in, and we just received word last week that funding was secured. And we're going to be able to pilot the In Good Health project in Livingston, in Livingston Range. As of Monday, we learned that the University of Lethbridge is also interested in this partnership. And we will be meeting on November twelfth, uh, to bring this project together. Our career practitioners don't even know about this, so keep it to yourselves, right? The project was named, um, was named for the meaning of the Cree word Mio Machuan, to honor the youth this work was originally designed to serve. So Mio Machuan is in good health in Cree. At its inception, the intent was to support Indigenous youth living in Edmonton to engage in health-promoting sectors of the urban economy. Since prototyping and piloting the project in a single location and then having expanded the intended populations to include new Canadians and other marginalized youth, and create a model that is customizable and low, to the local context and need. So we're going to be bringing groups of people together to discuss what it is that our students need in moving from, um, school to post-secondary and, 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 and work. So we'll be bringing together Sandra Lamouch, our career practitioners, um, some of our elders and other community members, uh, as needed. Through these pilot activities, they've worked with a hundred and sixty-two youth, seventy-one percent who are identified as Indigenous and nineteen percent who were identified as new to Canada. Together, they earned a total of five hundred and twenty-six high school credits and twenty types of industry standard certifications. These are things like hosting weekend retreats, uh, where they can earn one credit or week-long, um, retreats where they can earn more than one credit. And get some of their certifications around first aid, uh, leadership in the workforce, um, things like that that will make them, um, that will build that leadership for them to be more successful in the future. For twelve of the youths, enough credits were earned through this programming to help them graduate on time and with their peers where they otherwise would not have. So, John, when you asked, um, earlier about that land-based program, this is one of those connections that we're going to be making. We haven't specifically outlined how that could look during that week. But we have, um, Actua is another partner and they provide, uh, science, technology, engineering, and math. And this all relates, so everything is sort of coming together to create this great big, uh, process for supporting our students. They've engaged already with four school boards and two large-scale employers, uh, municipal recreation departments, and along with many other community partners who demonstrate a high level of readiness to support and expand this work. The next steps for this project are aimed at creating accessible, inclusive opportunities for Livingston Range students to earn high school credit while gaining employment-related certifications and connect these students to potential employment and/or post-secondary opportunities in the region. The work will reduce barriers to youth employment by both preparing students for the workforce and by dismantling barriers within workplaces and post-secondary institutions near those students. It's interesting, Danny Balderson is, um, the Associate Dean of Education at the University of Lethbridge. And they talked about a stat that when students arrive to the University of Lethbridge, eighty-three percent of them are interested in education. However, by their third year, it's less than thirty percent are still interested in education. And so this is one of the mechanisms that they're hoping they can, uh, engage in to get more First Nation students to be, uh, interested in education when they arrive at the University of Lethbridge and continue on into the Department of Education while they're there. Uh, armed with the experience of these successful pilot initiatives, this proposal seeks to expand the impact on even more marginalized and underserved youth across Southern Alberta by implementing In Good Health in partnership with EverActive Schools, the University of Lethbridge, and Livingston Range School Division. Any questions?
Trustee McKee?
You've just blown me away. I mean, that is such a, uh, great program that you're just discussing right now. I'm just, I can't thank you enough for what you're doing with regards to it. And of course, the, uh, Daryl and, and Chad as well, like, and, uh, Jeff as well, he's, uh, right there. But I mean, it's a great program. I, I think you're, uh, feeling an itch, you know, that was kind of missing in. And I just can't thank you enough for, for being part of a program like that.
Very fortunate to be part of an amazing team.
Yeah, it's really interesting and exciting to see these things. When I hear about our career practitioners, um, being in the schools and being there to help, I love knowing that, you know, as we prepare students to leave our schools, that they're getting the help to go in the right directions that they need. Do you think that with all of the projects that they're doing and talking with grade twos and fours and younger, that they will still have enough time to give those grade tens, elevens, and twelves the focus and the time that they need to help them get set up on, on that path? Or do you think that they will be stretched?
I think with any new way of doing things, there is a, a bit of a stress level that increases as you start to do things differently. I believe that because they're going to be more proactive with our younger students and help them to begin with the end in mind as they're moving through their career, uh, as, as learners, that as they reach that grade ten, eleven, and twelve, that it won't be the, the race that it is in panic to get all of the things in line that they need, that they'll already know kind of what to do and they'll have those steps in place already. Right now, they have not made one, um, issue of time, uh, with meeting with the grade tens through twelves. They have a timeline that they provide me with when they're going to be meeting with students. So like, uh, October fifteenth is the deadline for, uh, certain, certain grants. And so they make sure that all the students are aware of those things. They have timelines in the school. So they do have mechanisms to, um, to make sure that information is out there.
That's really great. It's nice with the high-level anxiety that we're seeing in students moving forward that, you know, we're starting younger and trying to get them prepared, so there isn't that panic. So is there any other questions? Trustee Toon?
I think that this is really amazing. One of the things I, I think we need to, to champion to our stakeholders is the number of kids that are accessing these programs. When you're talking, they're, they're meeting at those younger grades. It's not twenty or thirty, uh, high school kids in each community that are benefiting from these programs and the amazing resources that, that this division, uh, puts forward. So I, I think that's something that we really need to highlight is the number of kids that are benefiting from this. Going forward would be key, kind of like when the, the transportation report, we hear how many students access that service. We, I think, we as a board and the public and stakeholders need to be aware of how many kids are benefiting from this, the, the high school kids and the elementary schools, kind of a Kind of a breakdown of that, I think, would be really crucial.
No, and that was something that is on our list of data collection points, for sure. Yeah.
I was also really impressed with the idea of helping all students, whether they are heading to post-secondary or directly into a trade, or that we're willing to help all students and find the best path for them. So thank you so much for your wonderful work on this. If there's no other questions, then we need to do our three key messages. Trustee Long?
Well, that would be one. A discussion at all levels, K to 12, about career practitioners, what we're offering. You talked about them meeting each grade 12 student. I think that's wonderful. So I would say that's one.
You got it. Spot number one. Trustee Toon?
I think our enrollment data is really positive across the division, highlighting that we had at least another successful year with being able to attract and retain students. And if no one else has thrown anything out, I think our transportation, the successful year.
That's what I was going to say.
We add with that.
Transportation.
Another great highlight, and our safety record with no incidents this past year is something we really need to champion, how safe our drivers are, and the amazing job our transportation coordinators do in making sure that happens.
I would love to highlight the weekdays till 6, but I think there's already a plan to roll that out. So I think we can leave that off the list, but I am very excited to see it roll out. I think it's going to be great. Okay, just three messages this month. Trustee Long?
Could I get on next month's agenda? I have a speech I prepared for the minister that, never mind.
Well, I saw your speech, and it was cut for a reason. Okay, can I get a motion to go on camera? Okay, Jim made the motion to go on camera, and we'll move to the other room. Can I get a motion to adjourn? Trustee Long to adjourn at 4:36. Thank you.